Page meeting order, on September ninth, please rise for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Kelly.
Mr. Betterbit, here. Mr. Caselya.
Delve.
Miss Flynn.
Excused.
Mr. Rukowski.
Excused.
Ms. Stadler.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Sear.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Here. First, it's meant.
Excessor in the back of the LGI.
Alright, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals to seek legal advice for a school attorney and to, uh, and to review the proposed sale or lease of real, of real property only when publicity would substantially affect their value thereof.
Forward.
Second.
Counting to questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six now, six oh. Alright. We'll be back shortly. Safety plan time. Um, any questions, comments? I don't see a big audience to ask questions, but board members may have questions. What are you laughing at, Flor?
Nothing. She's just happy.
I'm just happy.
Do you want me to talk a little bit?
Sure, why don't you give us a little.
Alright, so we have a district safety plan that's been out for the public to look at for a good part of the summer. And we were gonna do it at the last board meeting, but with the reschedule, we needed to push it to this one. Uh, the district safety plan is the public's, uh, safety slash emergency document. Uh, we also have six building emergency plans, uh, which the board will approve, uh, at the next, or look at at the next meeting. Uh, those are not open to the public, those are developed, uh, by all of our building emergency teams, by, uh, Mark Thomas, by our consultants, Elteris, uh, safety consulting, and local law enforcement, and, uh, our first responders, so, um, so this is just a part of what we do, it kind of is an overview. And it doesn't get into specifics about how each building responds to emergencies, probably for obvious reasons. Uh, we don't wanna broadcast that out to everyone. Uh, but I will highlight a couple of things that are new and, and I'm gonna publicize, uh, tonight. Uh, we're hoping for board approval for the plan, and so after that board approval, I'm gonna publicize it. Uh, we're adding something this year, it's anonymous reporting, it'll be on the website. And it's actually on there right now, but we're gonna kind of broadcast it to the entire community and, and make it a little bit more prominent on the website. But that anonymous reporting is just another level of, uh, provides students, uh, community members, staff, uh, the ability to, uh, report, uh, a threat or a safety concern, um, to, uh, to the district. And that anonymous report then goes to us, uh, top-level administrators, and then we decide what to do with it, working with Mark Thomas and, and others. So, uh, so that's one new thing this year. Uh, some of the things that started happening last year, uh, just to highlight, last year was the first year of us having, uh, a director of security for the district, Mark Thomas. Um, he, you know, some of the rationale, uh, for me in proposing that position was to bring a little bit more focus to it, uh, to help all of our building administrators, uh, with the focus on safety. But also to allow our building administrators to focus on the teaching and learning part and leave some of the, like, the organizing and the troubleshooting, uh, to someone who's more of an expert. And so that's been the case for this past year, Mark, uh, has a district-wide presence, uh, and is in all of our buildings, and at a lot of our community events. And he really helps troubleshoot, he acts as a liaison to local law enforcement, um, and also, uh, at times in relating to families as well. So, he's meeting with our administrators continually, he helps chair the district safety committee that meets every month. And so that's, uh, something new that we started this year. The other thing, even, even though we started with Elteris kind of a year and a half ago, uh, we saw, uh, the benefits of working with Elteris really came to fruition last year. Um, they really, uh, they trained all our building emergency teams, they provided, was it a day-long training for each of those teams? Uh, which was very in-depth, uh, I got to see some of that training and also got an overview of what they do. They go over lots of different scenarios, they really are all about preparing, uh, and kind of preparing for all contingencies and getting you to think about lots of different things that can happen in a building. And so the training level has really increased. We've also done some of our own training, Mark Thomas and another senior security monitor in the district, Joe Galbo, uh, have done training in the district with Handle With Care. Uh, Handle With Care is a de-escalation, um, set of strategies that we have a team of people in each of our buildings trained in and all of our security staff. We've also trained all of our staffs in each of our buildings on Stop the Bleed, which is, uh, kind of a intensive first aid kind of thing that helps people, um, learn how to apply tourniquets and stop bleeds in any kind of situation. Something might happen on the playground or, or something, and it takes first responders a few minutes to get here, and, you know, we wanted all of our staff trained in that. So those are some things that have happened, uh, this past year. We also have kind of some simple things that Elteris helped work with us on. Uh, each of our classrooms has a quick and easy sort of, uh, you know, emergency chart for all of our staff members to look at, just as a reference point. Uh, so that's been kind of a nice clear thing that's happened. We also, uh, we also have really obviously adhered to the state requirements for training, but we have local law enforcement come to, you know, whether they're lockdown drills or evacuation drills to give us feedback and to help us out with that. Um, lastly, I think our staff does a really good job in working with our students, um, despite all, all of this emphasis on safety to help, um, to help our students not, um, sort of feel like they're in a state of crisis, to not be scared, uh, all the time, to help really provide a sense of security. And so I know our teachers really focus on, on doing that during lockdown drills and the rest of our staff do, and so that's something that we also think about. I feel like, uh, you know, every week in the news, I see, uh, an article or an opinion piece about, um, about school districts creating a sense of fear amongst the students with some of the things we do. Um, I can't necessarily control how everyone reacts to the drills, but I do know we really try to emphasize a sense of safety and calm with these, and that's something that our principals always emphasize with their staff. Um, so that's, that's just kind of a little bit of a laundry list of things we're doing, uh, but I will say, I'll, working with Elteris the last year and a half has been great. They really provide a high level of expertise, um, to, uh, to our work, and, and Mark is the director of security, really helps, uh, helps with training, day-to-day work, liaison, work with law enforcement, like I said, uh, and also helping us troubleshoot. We have this beautiful field, uh, with lights, so we have evening events now that will be starting up, uh, in the next few days, and so that's another thing that we, uh, that we have to look at. And one last thing I'll say is we have really a high level of cooperation with, uh, with, with our local agencies. Uh, I always give a shout-out to the Beacon PD, uh, and our Beacon Fire Department. Uh, they especially are at, uh, all of our meetings and come to most of our drills and, uh, and help us out in, uh, in difficult or tricky situations, so, um, so those two organizations along with all of our other first responders in the community really help us out. So that's just an overview, uh, there's a lot of work that goes into this, and you'll see the building plans at the next board meeting, they'll be, uh, sent to you confidentially, and they're not something that the public sees, but they will be something that the board approves as well. So, Mark, I don't know if there's anything you wanna add to my little overview.
Uh, just, uh, ongoing training, CPR also, uh, we're back with the, again, starting a pre-yearly training with the Handle With Care, um, and it's field outside now, and, and we're dealing with the logistics of that and, and the security for the field and night activity that we have back there. Um, so it's an ongoing thing. We've just started all the drills, uh, I sent out a, um, calendars for all the principals and administrators to sign up for drills, so they all know what time, when they're gonna be going. PD, uh, we had one today, FD, fire department was there, um, as we go forward, the, uh, police department with the lockdown drills and everything and, and coordinating with Elteris and a lot of stuff also.
Great. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
In the section titled Reporting Threats or Acts of Violence, it says each school has a designated reporting process. Is that process essentially the same for each school, or is there individual? Is it, is the process different at each school?
No, it's pretty much the same, I mean, it's the, the administrators, it'd be the top administrator in each building, which would be the principal.
Okay.
And then the principal works directly either with me or Eric Wright or Bill or Loner and Rick Corderoni. And then with, you know, having Mark be a part of things the last year, Mark is a part of those if it, if we feel like it's at that level. And so, being a small district, I think we really benefit from quickly responding to things, and, uh, and one of us is always able to get to a principal almost immediately. And so that's basically how that works, um, sometimes, uh, sometimes we do also work, uh, if it's something that we feel like needs more than just us looking into, we will work with, uh, local law enforcement. And they will sometimes do what they call, uh, to be like a safety or welfare check on either a student or a family. And so that's something that, you know, doesn't happen a lot, but that's something that, um, that our local law enforcement has helped us out with to kind of assure us that, you know, things are okay.
Okay, thank you.
Question, um, about the anonymous reporting. What kinds of threats, or you said threats, what kinds of things would people report through the anonymous reporting system?
Uh, I mean, they're actually able to kind of report just about anything, so it could be something, uh, about, um, you know, the walk to school, to, uh, someone said something on social media last night and I need you to look at it. Uh, so, so we've actually had somebody, uh, even though we haven't been sort of broadcasting, if someone utilizes it with us and it goes straight, you know, it goes straight to us, and then we just deal with it pretty much immediately.
So it doesn't necessarily just like a terrorism kind of thing, but just if you're.
Oh, no, no, I mean, we'll, we'll explain better when we send it out, it is not, it, it's, it could actually be even, uh, not even, I'm not at all saying these are low-level, these in fact are very, very serious things, but it could be a bullying incident or something where someone's just not feeling good about coming to school. Uh, so it does not, you know, sometimes I think we think of things that are in the news, and it does not have to be that, it could be something that just makes someone not feel safe. And that, that could be a wide variety of things, and so then we're in touch with the principals right away, and, um, yeah, so we're, we're kind of always in communication about stuff like that.
Well, there'll be any kind of fly or anything sent to, to students that are high school students, probably primarily?
Yeah, I will, uh, I'll talk with, uh, I'll talk with both Elisa Soto and Brian Saltish about that too, about how they can broadcast that to the students.
That's fantastic.
And we have our student advisors to the board now, so we can talk to them about best ways to reach out to our students, so, um.
Any other questions?
I have one. In the review of this, it was noted that, uh, there's a list of contact people, there were some holes and blanks and name changes on that. Question one would be, have we filled in the blanks? And question two is, who's responsible for periodically updating that when personnel changes occur?
Yeah.
Other changes.
It would be me and Mark Thomas that are responsible for that, we did make the changes that we were able to make. We have two blank spaces still and this final one for approval tonight, and that would be for the teacher representative and the parent representative. And so I, I'll be working, uh, with staff to identify a teacher to come to the meetings, and I was waiting for the school year to start to recruit a parent, um, because, uh, it's just harder in the summertime to do some of that recruiting. So what I'll do when we identify those people is I'll just notify the board that we've updated and we've added those two people. Uh, we also, I should, Anthony Zhang pointed out something on page twenty-one of the plan, it was about, um, oh, Anthony may have gone out there, but, uh, it was about, uh, responding to violence. And item ten on the original district safety, or district emergency plan that people, uh, saw had a, that we had a zero tolerance, uh, response to violence. That's actually not the case, obviously, we respond to violence very seriously and we take it very seriously, uh, but zero tolerance of, of things is not typically how we respond. We don't want kindergarten student who might push another kindergarten student to have like a zero tolerance type thing, uh, put on them, and you could come up with a hundred different examples of, of when zero tolerance doesn't work. So, and Anthony caught that and we made that change, so we struck that number ten from the final document.
Any other questions? Students, any questions? No. Alright. Moving on to the workshop, I know at the last board meeting, which was on a Thursday, because we didn't have a forum on Monday, um, we talked briefly about the tax warrant, so Emery's gonna give the presentation that she was gonna do last board meeting on the Monday.
And, and we, right before you go, I've been throwing stuff over to our student advisors, we haven't introduced them, so I just wanna take a moment.
I was gonna have to do a little thing, but go ahead.
Oh, sorry, uh, I just keep, you know, throwing questions at them, so, no, just kidding. Uh, we have our two student advisors to the board joining us for this year, Grace Afell and Kalia Dursow, and we're very excited, uh, to have them aboard, and they'll have a chance to speak a little bit later. Or if they have questions about the tax warrant, Emery.
You can ask.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanna go over a couple of key points, um, just about the budget process and the bus proposition. So our tax levy increase that was voted on by the public was increased by four point four four percent. And the proposition for the buses where we finance them over a five-year period increased the levy point two zero percent. So our total overall increase for the budget and the bus proposition was four point six four percent. And again, we mentioned this a lot during the budget, but I think it was important, the tax-based growth factor allowed Beacon to increase their levy by six hundred and thirty-four thousand, which is taken into consideration with some of the tax cap percentage amount. Um, and the allowable growth factor, which is always the lesser of CPI of two percent or two percent, so we were allowed to increase, um, the tax levy by that two percent, which actually helped get us to the four point four four percent. And, uh, a reminder that during the budget process, we do use two point five million dollars of excess fund balance and reserves to try to keep the tax levy as low as we can and meet the cap. Um, and we are using this year the remainder of the tax reduction reserve, which was the money that we received for Old Beacon High School, this will be the last year that we have any money left, um, to use for that. So changes in assessment values, so you've seen me the last couple of years come up and, and talk about changes of assess, assessment. Um, we get this from the Office of Real Property and we use it to levy for school taxes. So Beacon's overall increase was twelve point three percent, so that means changes in assessment to individual people's homes, but it also means properties that have entered into, uh, the tax rolls to try to minimize, uh, some of the tax increases. Again, Fishkill, Wappingers have, are both on the positive increase amount as well, but Beacon is where we see the most change. The tax rates per thousand, again, um, I'll, I'll mention on the slide, the next slide, but we, we see a decrease, again, um, this would be the fourth year, that Beacon, Fishkill and Wappingers' tax rate per thousand has decreased, and that's, that's mainly because of the change of assessments and the increase of the assessment amount. So this slide basically shows a four-year difference, so in two thousand fifteen sixteen, Beacon was at sixteen point five one, uh, sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents per thousand. Now they're at fifteen point four two, so we've seen a progression of the last four years, um, of tax rates reducing because of the, the, um, the addition of tax properties entering the tax rolls. Again, this is star exemption, so I, I only show this slide because with all of the good that goes on with the tax rate, it gets a little bit minimized by the reduction of star every year. So it, it kind of all enters into the calculation. So I, I like to give, uh, these three slides to just kind of give a comparison, um, so when you have an average home of two hundred ninety thousand five hundred with the star exemptions that we just mentioned, um, a taxpayer should have a reduction of sixty-five dollars. Now, what has, I've had a couple of questions, um, from taxpayers, which were great questions, um, their house may be at two hundred ninety thousand now, but last year it was not. So if they have a change in their assessment, they may not see a reduction, they may see an even amount, they may see a slight increase. Um, so I, I, I wanna kind of make that clear, 'cause I don't want people to get their tax bills within the next day and say, wait, you said my taxes were gonna go down. So it's just, it's just showing you what the tax rate does if your house stayed the same as, um, the assessed, as it was assessed last year. In the town of Fishkill, the same, this was, um, the average home value of three fifty, three five hundred with the star exemption, so it'd be an eighty-two dollar reduction. Again, the same factors, it would have to remain the same, the assessments. And in Wappingers, using an average of three fifty, five hundred with the stars and a reduction of eighty-three dollars. So, um, when people get their homes reassessed, um, some, the percentage is not quite across the board, some are higher percentage than others, so everybody's individual tax situation will be different. I think the important thing to, to focus on is that in the last four years, Beacon was able to reduce the tax rate. If we had increased the rate and had all of these changes in assessments, people's tax bills would have looked extremely different than what they're gonna look like. Um, before I finish, I also wanna just, just mention, we have a revised tax warrant on the agenda, and I wanted to explain that, one of the board members had a question to that as well. So with the change in the, in the board meeting, although the tax warrant is ready, the Office of Real Property will not print the tax bills until the day after the meeting. So the, the tax bills were printed, were delayed, um, about three or four days until after the meeting. So it didn't match with our original, um, collection period, which was supposed to start last Tuesday. So that doesn't give people a fair thirty days to pay without penalty, so we are adjusting the tax warrant, um, in the newspaper tomorrow, it will have the new dates in it, but the tax collection will officially start tomorrow on the ninth. And then it will go forward for thirty days without penalty, and then thirty more days. So we are going to, once the board meeting is, is, um, over tonight, tomorrow we will go on the website and just try to explain it clearly, but it will be in the legal notice, um, and if we have questions. The tax bills have the old dates, so we wanna make sure, um, people realize that they have an extra week before they have to, um, pay without penalty, yes.
Does that apply also to Fishkill and Wappingers residents who live in the Beacon School District?
Yes, so it, I, I, I'm talking about all the people that would, that would pay Beacon City School District taxes. I know, um, Wappingers had a, a little different issue with their bills, um, which I'm not sure of, but this is, this was directly an effect of just getting the bills printed and, um, putting them out. So we wanna make sure everybody has a fair shot to pay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I do have one, um, it's interesting, uh, where the, uh, tax base growth factor in, uh, the city of Beacon was six hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. What would that be as a percentage? Because I think what you said is the allowable limit is two percent.
Well, the allowable, no, the allowable limit is an additional way to increase the levy, so you start with last year's levy, and we're allowed to increase it by six hundred thirty-four thousand and then a two percent increase. So those are all the, the additions to the levy from last year, so that's how we actually got to the four point four percent. Because again, you know, people in their mind think that the tax cap means two percent, and it's very hard, you know, when you're telling people you're raising the tax levy by four point four, I wanted people to understand that there are, are different calculations and exceptions. This happens to be one for Beacon, um, that we benefited from.
So it's an additional two percent, that's your base two percent, is that right?
Right, if we hadn't, if we had zero, um, tax-based growth factor, say it was just flat, and in years past we have, you would only allow to raise the levy from last year by two percent.
Right, that's your nominal two percent tax cap increase, but then what you're able to add to that is some growth factor.
And then there's some exclusions as well, later on in the calculation.
Thank you, Emery.
Okay, thank you.
Kelly, you have the, uh, item to the agenda, would you like it? So. Completely separate. Wanna do it thirteen?
Is that right after the tax?
After consent, oh, no, if you wanna do the tax warrant, it's gonna be twelve, and then consent would be thirteen. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to add an agenda to, an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Uh, I gotta say what it is. Um, it would be that, uh, be resolved that the Board of Education authorizes a joint, uh, solicitation with Douglas County for an appraisal of certain portions of a parcel of real property partially improved by Douglas Stadium upon suitable terms and conditions mutually agreed upon by the board and the county as recommended by the Boards of Attorneys.
So moved.
Second. That was Jameson. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Was that an opposed?
No, I was saying aye.
Okay. It sounded like an opposed. So seven oh. Alright, and that will be twelve, we're gonna do twelve, twelve point oh one. And that would be resolution, I think we already have, uh, something for today. Just C, so it will be oh nine, oh nine nineteen C. Alright. Any student or school, oh, and we do have another item that needs to be revised, that was twelve point oh four, instructional personnel, it was a date change on N. And the change is reflected in the electronic version of board notes. Alright, any student or school presentations? Seen none, parent groups, we'll run along and open to the public. Alright, super intense report.
That was quick. You guys like that, right?
That's fun.
It doesn't always happen that way.
Alright, so, uh, we have had a great start, so I wanted to take, uh, an opportunity to, uh, roll through some pictures of, uh, some of the back-to-school things happening, and also, uh, provide some pictures for our Capitol Project work. So this is a beautiful bulletin board at Sergeant Elementary School, first graders are making their New Year's resolutions. One of the great things about working in education is you get to do this every year, you get to start over and renew, and so these first graders' resolutions are, uh, a lot of them were about how they're gonna be teaching and helping others, so it was really cool to see that today. Um, so this was just, uh, we have two days, uh, that our staff comes back before students do. Uh, this year we kind of reversed things, the first day they're in their buildings, uh, really spending some time reviewing all the, uh, professional development that happened this summer. Uh, many of the teachers attended, and also, uh, spending time in grade level or department level teams. Day two, uh, we all gathered, uh, in the theater, and, um, Anthony White, uh, gave a talk, just really going over a lot of the highlights from last year, and helping to chart the course a little bit for the upcoming year. And then, uh, I also gave a little talk, and what I focused on, uh, I called it invitations, and so I asked, uh, kind of invited folks, uh, to learn more about some of the things that a lot of our teachers are learning about. Uh, things like technology, using data, uh, responsive classroom at the elementary level, restorative practices at the secondary level, the dignity framework that a large number of our teachers learned about. And so I focused on, uh, the folks who were willing to take that first step with us with, uh, these different trainings this summer, and also taking a little bit of time, uh, to explain kind of, uh, what this stuff is all about. And so, it was a great start, this is, uh, donut time after the speech, 'cause you gotta sugar people up a little bit for the rest of the day, uh, and then people went back to their buildings and, um, you know, prepared for the first day of school, which was the next day. So first day, uh, was great, uh, my team and I got around to all of the buildings, this is South Avenue, and then, uh, Brian Saltish is on that little picture up there in the corner, uh, two schools welcoming their students on the first day. Uh, just all, in all the buildings, it was just a hugely positive feel, and, uh, it just felt great to be back. And it was also really gratifying, uh, to see, like, say, at the elementary level, to see, uh, a lot of teachers, even teachers who didn't do the training this summer, uh, doing responsive classroom-type things like morning meetings, uh, in their class, so that was really cool to see. In fact, this is a class at Sergeant, uh, from just the other day, that's doing a, a morning meeting, and a part of every morning meeting is a greeting, and so this is students and staff greeting each other to start off the day. And so we're not requiring that this happens, we're just inviting folks to be a part of the work, and people are really buzzing about it and, uh, talking about it and sharing, and that's, uh, it's been really cool to see. Alright, so moving on to the Capitol, uh, project, uh, we had last Friday the very first game on the new turf field, girls soccer, and, uh, this is just some of the opening minutes. I am the photographer here, so the pictures aren't that great, uh, but it was really great to. But it was really great to see it finally happen. So things are kind of happening. The field is all set, obviously. We have our teams practicing now and having games on it. But things that are still yet to happen, we're waiting for the bleachers to come. They might come this week for the football game on Friday, but there's a chance, because it's in delays with the manufacturer, that they might not. So we'll improvise possibly for the first football game, or who knows, maybe they might come. But we now have the press box set up. I just saw it today. So I don't have a picture of it, because I saw it just a couple of minutes before the board meeting. But that's so coaches or assistant coaches, I guess during the games, can watch the games happen. And we're working on getting the sound system set up. And so things are kind of happening. And because things are still kind of happening over the next few weeks, we're really gonna officially celebrate the field on October fourth, which is homecoming. And that's gonna be a number of different teams playing on the field that day. I don't have the schedule right off the top of my head, but we'll be sharing that out with the whole community. And so just Saturday, the boys soccer played. Boys soccer played again today on the field. And it's been great. So I think it's been really exciting for the athletes and the coaches, and all the people coming to the games, too. And that's, I did get a good picture of it, but that's our concession stand, our future concession stand. You can see Mr. Jimenez ready to start making money there. And that came in on Friday afternoon, too, so we have to do a little bit of setup, but that's kind of up to the side. And so over to Rambout, there's three rooms I want to focus on. So, you know, we had a lot of work happen around the district, but probably the most visible things were the field. And then these three, these three rooms at Rambout Middle School that got completely redone. So this is the Assistant Daily Living Class, the ADO class. And so you come in, and they have, they had this last year, but they have a store for students and staff. It's the Corner Cafe where you can get things to drink, and so that's really cool right at the beginning. This is the classroom part where there's small group work. And then right at the bottom of that picture is where the student desks are. There is the kitchen part of the room, so, you know, you have the fridge, the stove. This class does a lot of that, and they're very excited to start using this. Couple of workspaces. You see some spaces for students to work independently and quietly. And then kind of the storage area for this classroom, also has a washer and a dryer. So we're really excited. These were things that we did not have before. All right, moving on to the eighth-grade science room. And this is, I have a couple of shots of the lab portion, but this is the lab portion of the room. This is the, more of the classroom part. So the teachers worked with their principals to order the furniture, and we really tried to get stuff that's a little bit more modern. What we found was these desks are a little bit big for the space. And so they're gonna find, there's a couple of other classrooms where these would fit a little bit better. So we're gonna order some new desks for this space, then move those desks, which are really cool. We're gonna move those to a different classroom. But it's looking really good in this class. Another shot of the lab. And one more shot of the lab. The lab part just looks beautiful. If you, I could've done a little before and after, maybe at some point I will do a little before and after, but the lab did not look like that last year. All right, and now Home and Careers. This is also exciting. This is the classroom parts. She, the teacher working with Mr. Saltis also ordered some kind of more modern furniture for that space. And it fits here really well. And I got to see this class on the very first day of school with eighth graders in it, and they were just like, it was like some sort of reality makeover TV show, because they just were blown away when they walked in. It was really cool. And so that's the classroom space, and these are the kitchen work areas that are in this space. And so this is just one of them. I have some different angles here. Couple of nice fridges, some more. There's still some tile work and some duct work that needs to happen. You can see up in the corner there, but these kitchen space, these work areas for the students are absolutely beautiful, and the kids cannot wait to start working. And, okay, on to the unit ventilators. This was the part of the, this was the part of the project that got a little bit delayed. We had two different manufacturers close down plants and slow down, you know, the manufacturing process for these, but they started to come in. They started to come in on Friday of last week. And so all of these spaces in Sargent, South Avenue, and Rambout are covered. But the unit ventilators are starting to come in, so here you see what one will look like. So that's a new one. It just hasn't been hooked up yet. So the H rack contractor that we're working for will be working four to twelve. They'll be working four to twelve shifts, probably for the rest of September to install these in Sargent. This is the library at Sargent, but to install these in Sargent, South Avenue, and Rambout. So this was the one part that got a little bit delayed due to some manufacturing issues. This is what another one looks like. This is the cafeteria at Sargent. Again, just giving you a sense of what it looks like. It's not hooked up yet, but they'll be doing that over the next few evenings, probably for the rest of this month. It's been really gratifying to see this project getting closer to its end point. And it's really gratifying to see the classroom spaces and to see the field just being used and loved already by our students. And back to the beginning of the year, it's been a really positive start of the year. And to just walk around all our buildings and to see the professional development that you all invested in, that most of it took place this summer, to see people really using it already in their classrooms, stuff that really helps us develop that culture of care and that greater sense of belonging. It's been really gratifying to see that as well. So thanks, Board, for your support of that P, professional development, but also thanks for helping us with this capital project. It's really cool to see it being used, and the kids have been really excited. So thank you.
Cool. Matt, does the science labs have smart boards in them, or is it just whiteboards?
It does. It has, right now it has a smart board kind of on a stand that can move around. Working with the teacher, we want, she actually wants to put it up on the wall, so we're gonna do that. And that'll probably happen in the next week or two.
Any other questions?
And so, I'm sorry, we will do board tours of all the spaces. It would, both with the exact session being before the meeting, and also just this being the third day of school, it would've been a little hectic. But I'll work with Anthony and Meredith to get that schedule going. And for whatever reason, when we make the schedule, if you can't make that night, we really want you to see these new spaces, so we'll figure out a time for all the boards to see these spaces, too.
Well, thank you. You guys did a great job making sure it got done and stuff, so we do appreciate it.
Yes, we got a lot of steps in the last few days, walking, walking around all the buildings.
Everything's great. All right, so we do have two new student advisors to the board, as mentioned before. And this is your first report, but before you get started, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you were interested in becoming student advisors to the board?
I'm Kulia Dresow. I went to South Avenue Elementary School, yeah. And, yeah, then Rambout, and then here. I used to, I used to do swim, but I had to stop for stuff that was going on. I'm part of the math club. Yeah, I don't know, I really liked the high school. I like being a part of the community. I like all the events going on, so I was really interested in taking this position so I could kind of like see the behind scenes, see how stuff like really works. Because I want to be a teacher when I grow up. I want to be a math teacher. And then I thought about getting into administration. I'd like to be a principal. I feel like that would be a lot of fun. I don't know, I really like, I like school. It's fun. So, yeah, that's why, that was pretty much why I was interested in.
Awesome. Well, thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, hi, everyone. I'm Grace. I'm a senior at Lake Kalia. I play basketball, volleyball, and lacrosse, so a lot of sports. I also was really interested in seeing like the inner workings of the school board and stuff like that, how everything happens, like how you guys make decisions and everything. And when I went off to college a year, I really want to study government and politics and stuff like that. I feel like these are kind of similar, related, so I'm really excited for this year. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you, and welcome aboard. Do you guys have an update about what's been going on, opening a school or anything?
Yeah. So I'm just gonna talk about the new turf field, which you already did. I can just speak for myself and the entire Beacon High community. We are all so excited to have the new turf field here. Today I had my first gym class out there. It was lots of fun playing out there. And the boys soccer game just finished up, and just watching all the games out there with my friends, like cheering us on, it's just so nice and like pretty, all the lights and stuff like that. Very excited for the football game on Friday. And just along with sports, we all start out the year, girls volleyball, boys soccer, and the football team all had wins in the past couple of weeks. Very exciting. And this is my senior year, so it's just a great year. I'm very excited for it.
And I'm gonna be talking more about stuff like in the school. So we're getting our laptops. The sophomores are getting them tomorrow, the juniors are getting them the eleventh, and seniors are getting them on the twelfth. So this is really exciting, because this is the first year that the whole school is going to have their own personal laptops. I've heard about other schools having them. I know in the middle school that the eighth graders, and I think the whole middle school has them, and so they're finally moving them up here. And it's gonna be really, it's gonna be really nice to be able to have like your own personal laptop at school, especially for kids who don't have that at home. It's gonna help them a lot with being able to dig their schoolwork down, especially since everything's online now, so that's gonna be really helpful. And also in the student classrooms, I have Mr. Johnson for English, and he painted, he has a special wall that he painted like teal to make the classrooms feel more homey and make it, you know, more like a nice space. He has posters up on the wall, and a lot of other teachers are doing that. Mr. Johnson was the first teacher to do it, and now other teachers in the English wing, and I think it's starting to venture out that teachers are doing things to make the classroom more homey, to make it more comfortable for students, and just, yeah, a lot more fun for them. And then also, Ms. Soto, she has a Twitter account now for the high school that she's managing, but me and Grace are managing the Instagram account. So that's really exciting. And Ms. Soto asked, we want to ask if we could get a picture of the whole board to be one of the first things that we post on our Instagram.
Absolutely. You gotta be part of that picture, though. You have to be part of the picture.
Should we do it right now?
Still have Mr. rely. See how many likes we get. We'll stand up in front of them.
You guys go right in front.
Yeah, you go. All right, Bill, this better be good, because this is going on my social media, too.
This is a beautiful bunch right here. All right, everybody say cheese.
Cheese.
Say, go Beacon.
Go Beacon.
One more. Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, very, very good.
Could've done a freestyle one if you wanted.
Um, yes. That's all we really have to talk about this week, because definitely be a lot more. Since it's only the first week of school, there's not that much that's been going on, but as the school year goes on, even like next few weeks, like homecoming coming in October, and just all the different stuff that's going on, there's gonna be more of that.
What is your, what is the Instagram account?
Oh, it's BeaconCityHS.
All one word?
Yeah, all one word, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
And the first post will be up tonight after the meeting.
Great.
So you guys know that you are part of the board, right? Your advisors to the board. We rely heavily on you to get information and student feedback and stuff. So feel free to share. Sometimes we may, you may not think that we want to hear it, because it may not be positive, but we always want to hear it. All right, so don't hesitate to share anything that you have with us. And whenever there's presentations or anything, feel free to ask questions. All right, so if you have a question, you don't understand anything, ask, all right, so you know. All right?
Thank you.
And welcome aboard.
I think all the other board committee comments are gonna be kind of dull compared to. James, you can follow.
Who's launching the board's Instagram account?
Well, I want to reiterate what Anthony just said. It's so awesome to have student voices here. We do our best, but we're not in it in the same way you are. So hearing your perspectives is so valuable, not just for us, but for, you know, the entire city. I'm sure everyone is watching these videos, so they can see and hear what you have to say. So it's really great. It's exciting. We're back to school. Everything becomes chaotic. Both of my sons just started at Rambout, which I think I was more nervous than they were. It's really amazing just to remember how far we've come. When I was in middle school, I think most of the people in my generation will talk about it as some sort of rite of passage, maybe. But everything I'm hearing from my sons and their friends is that it's a totally positive experience. Very warm, great stuff with their teachers and adjusting, so it's really awesome. Really excited. We have the policy committee. I'm holding on setting our first meeting. I wanted to give Matt and his team a little time for the dust to settle. I know you guys have been very, very busy this week. So we're going to have an update in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll set our first committee meeting following that. And that's all I have. All right, thank you. Craig?
If I'm not mistaken, we have a meeting of the Facilities and Operations Committee set for Wednesday at seven, and the other members are not here tonight, so I just thought I would mention that. And plenty to talk about and how the capital program is going, and get into more details and think about some of the future. We are in the early stage of thinking about our next capital program, follow closely on the heels of this one. But one at a time, and I think the superintendent gave us a pretty good update on how it's going now. I have a few glitches here and there, but we'll have to manage to get through them, and then we'll be done, and can take the benefits of all of these improvements, which are considerable. So overall, I'm pleased. I did have one public comment come in, which I think I'll refer to the superintendent, which raised a question about whether the trees that are near the turf field would be damaged by all the heavy truck traffic going over their roots. I don't know, but that's something to think about. I'll pass that on. Other than that, that's what I got.
All right, thank you. Laura?
Yeah, so I wanted to also say that I'm so excited to have you guys on the team, and welcome aboard, and it's great to see the energy and the enthusiasm. But just to reiterate, we also love your insight, whether it's negative or positive. It's really useful for us, so don't hesitate. I also wanted to say that I have a first and third grader who went back into South, and I just love the way that the school makes the children feel welcome. There were all of these signs written all over the sidewalk, things that said, "You belong here, and you are loved," and the staff really goes out of their way to welcome the children into the door. And my kids have never not felt welcome. And I really feel like I see the school district exemplifying that culture of care, and I really appreciate that. In terms of the wellness committee meeting, I think we have some planning in the works, and a meeting will be announced soon, but we don't have a schedule as of yet. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
I just reiterate a warm welcome to Grace and Kalia. Really looking forward to hearing your perspective and getting to know you. Thank you. I don't have any other comments, except that I'm, again, as I said at the last meeting, just super psyched for school to be back in session, and I'm looking forward to a great year.
Anthony?
Good evening. I also want to extend welcome to the board members. Student board members have been very important to us. And we welcome, I welcome you, and I think we all welcome you. Also, I wanted to mention that I had attended the Beacon Papernacle Church's Health and Wealth Expo on August twenty-fifth, and I forgot to report that at the last board meeting. And there, all the Rambout students, after freedom, was reading, essay that she had submitted, and she had won that contest. Her essay had highlighted her allegiance to the purchase and her gratitude towards common partnership for, for improvement at the last report.
Thank you. Meredith?
I was really, well, first of all, welcome, guys. We're so, as everyone has said, really happy to hear your voices here and look forward to more. I was very excited. Anthony invited me to greet teachers on the second, or the day before the first day of school, and everyone seemed really excited, and saw some new faces, and everyone was... Everyone was welcoming everyone and, and it felt, it felt very warm and like everyone was working together. I was also really excited to see the, um, the pictures of the new furniture and, um, Rumba. So I think this is actually new this year that Rumba is sending out a bi-monthly newsletter. And one of the things that, um, was highlighted there was flexible seating. And it goes right with our strategic planning work, because, uh, one of the first slides that we saw was a picture about a hundred years old of students sitting in rows and, um, you know, everyone facing the same way and teacher teaching. And I think our teachers have already, uh, modified that in a lot of ways, but this actually helps them, supports them to do that work. Um, there was also a picture of an outdoor classroom, which is really exciting to see. I think Bretzerware donated chairs for that. Um, and, um, and they announced, and I, I think this is great, I think Sargent's also doing it, but that they're, they're collecting recycled materials. And I think that they actually, it's a fundraising tool for them as well, so I wanted everyone to know about it. There's a box in the parking lot next to the basketball court there, um, where you can throw up, well, not throw up, but donate clothing that's too worn to donate, to, to be worn or too stained, is, is often the case with my kids. Um, or old shoes, et cetera. And so it doesn't go to landfill, it gets reused and it raises money for Rumba, which is awesome. And, um, that's it. Thank you. Oh, and the next, um, Dutchess County School Board Association meeting is September 19th. I actually can attend that one, Craig, so you're off the hook for that. And I don't think we have, is Eric here? I don't, um.
He has to, he's, he had to leave.
That's okay. I don't know what our next curriculum meeting is, but I would be very interested.
All right. I just wanna say welcome back to the students. It was great to see. Uh, I attended September 4th District President's Conference Day and we did welcome back to the staff. Um, Matt, he does a top 10 this year. It was a top, uh, top 10 invitations, like, or 10 invitations. And it was so well done. I mean, the, the rapport that you have with the staff is evident. And the way that you can talk, you could go from joking and, and say in a joking manner, but yet bring it to a seriousness was definitely evident. And you could feel the vibe of the teachers in the, in the auditorium. Um, you know, calling out people that attended PD so, to try and get that interest by other people. Um, and, and you could hear people like just talking about, hey, when is the next one gonna be? Or, hey, can I go visit your classroom as I was walking out and stuff? So it really does have an impact and you jump off the year on such a positive note. Um, it was funny because people were like, uh, you know, the first invitation was, "Call me Matt." Right? Knocked Dr. Landau and he goes and says, "Well, if you start to email with Dr. Landau, I know that you're, it's gonna be a bad email." And he goes, "So if you call me Matt, I know that, you know, we're, we're having a conversation and stuff." So that was like the first invitation and he started out like that. Um, and, and it was just a really good, warm welcome back for the staff. I think they really appreciated having the first day to go in their classrooms and get it ready. And then have the whole district the second day.
Yes, I've heard that a few times.
You could just see him as they were walking in. We make it a point to get there early. So Gareth and I, Matt, Bill, were standing at the door and, you know, saying, "Welcome back" and stuff. And you could see him smiling and you could see the veterans that were like, "Yeah, I've already been doing this for two weeks and I'm just ready to go." Um, and, and, but the new faces, it's really nice to see. And then the next day, they get to see the students come back, which is, I think is such a joy. And, and this is what we do it for. And, I mean, you guys are so enthusiastic. I love that you guys already organized that one's gonna be doing the extracurricular, one's gonna be doing inside the building events. So, so each year we try and make it a little bit better and you guys already took it to that next level by organizing that piece already. So, you know, I'm excited to hear what you guys have to say and what you guys, you know, feel needs to be done. Because that's, it's all about you guys and thinking about your younger generations to come through. So, welcome aboard. We do have a board retreat next Monday, um, starting at seven o'clock and that's gonna be at the district office. Um, so that's just a reminder. And I think that's it.
Good question. Do we, do we have an agenda set for that?
Um, no, it was more of a, hey, let's kind of get together and kinda hash out some things, I think. Like, uh, communication is probably definitely gonna be something that's talked about. Um, so I'm, I'm assuming that's gonna be it, maybe how, like, the structures of how we're gonna communicate or, you know, how the committees are gonna go and, and, and kinda feel like that. So almost like the inner workings of the board type of piece. So if I had to formalize at this side, that's what I would.
That's a no.
How the conversation would go. Yeah, we'll take, that, that right there could take two days, so. All right. All right, uh, we need a motion to approve the revised tax warrant for the 2019-20 school year.
So moved.
Second. The floor, beach, two and Anthony. And this is a roll call, correct?
A time delay because of the, uh, technology.
He doesn't get compensated for that. This, this is a roll call, correct, Clay?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Hewer?
Yes.
Ms. Betterfield?
Yes.
Mr. Caslayo?
Yes.
Ms. Stadler?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Six, seven?
Seven.
Seven to seven, seven to zero. Motion is approved.
All right.
And it passes to Shearer.
Sure. All right, so as we're doing the consent agenda, please sign the roll call vote that we just had for the tax warrant, one of mine. All right, the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits supportive education make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters, um, which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to, to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right to report for board members to be heard on any issue. Any item from the consent agenda board member would like bolt. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the agenda 12.01 through 12.08.
So moved.
Second.
James, second was, was it?
It was me.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried, seven, zero.
Could we ask Mr. Giametta what the schedule is for homecoming?
So John, do you know the schedule for homecoming?
Yes.
Can you come down and, uh, put it on record for public?
Thanks.
Thank you.
We just had a really nice tie versus satin tee versus boys soccer. Uh, so a homecoming itinerary, so, uh, it's gonna be the week of October 4th. We're gonna start Spirit Week out. It starts Tuesday, obviously, we don't have school on Monday. Uh, each day, uh, the senior classes and the classes are gonna cite each of the spirit themes for that. Uh, and that goes to Friday, which is one of our big days. We're talking Tuesday to have a Power Plus football game, uh, out on the turf field between three and four PM. Uh, there's various contests that are going on, JV varsity throughout, uh, the course of the week. And then on Friday, we'll be going out with our student pep rally, which will be, uh, in school at eighth period, followed by our student tailgate. Same, similar that we did last year. And then from there, we'll be having three contests starting at four o'clock. We'll be having varsity girls soccer on the turf, varsity girls volleyball in the gym, and varsity girls tennis, which will be out on the tennis courts. Those are all be taking place at four o'clock. From there, we'll be doing, uh, fall athletic team recognition out on the turf field, which goes into our football game, which will take place at seven o'clock. Uh, after the football game, we're hoping to have a really nice fireworks display. I've been working with some community organizations to have that fundraise. It should be a really nice evening and then the kids will have, uh, our homecoming dance, which will take place on Saturday. Very excited about the week. I'm hoping to, uh, recruit some classes and some athletic teams to really pump it up during the, uh, Spirit of Beacon Day Parade, which will take place on Sunday, kind of works out perfect, uh, leading us up into the week. Uh, we had a great meeting with the class advisors today, just to talk about responsibilities, what we're gonna be doing. So the hope is that, uh, as we start to progress into October, you see some really nice decorations around the building. And, uh, we're already starting to feel the vibes and the excitement of the homecoming. So we're really excited to get it going.
Awesome.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
No problem.
And I did, I almost adjourned without, uh, going on the item that we added on to the agenda, which was 09, 09, 19C, which was the resolution for the RFP. Do you guys feel that needs to be read again or are you okay with it as read before?
I'm okay with it.
Okay with it as read before? So I need a motion to approve, uh, resolution 09, 09, 19C.
So moved. Second.
Second, floor. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried, seven, zero. And that was the RFP for the, for the appraisal of the stadium, just to clarify for people watching.
I have a question before we adjourn. Are we doing anything for Spirit of Beacon Day as a board?
I won't be around that weekend. Great.
I'm at a time of the weekend as well.
I'll be there. I think last year we sat at a table and I don't think anyone came to talk to us at all.
I, I think maybe I'm weirdo. I love sitting at the table.
Well, cause you sat and talked to me all day, that's why.
I did. You know who else I talked to though, which I actually really enjoyed, is we were sitting next to the teachers group and we guys would just hang out with the teachers.
Yeah.
Uh, which I don't usually get to do. Um, I don't mind sitting, uh, sitting out at a table for an afternoon, um, if we wanna put a, put a table out.
Does anyone wanna march with me?
I'll march with you. I'll march.
I would march.
All right.
That's easier, but I don't wanna put a table out just for.
We can do the table too.
I may be back in time, but not in time to march.
That's okay, Anthony, I've never marched with you.
Yes, we have, one time.
Oh, the first time, okay. You're right. It's.
That's the 28th, is that the date?
Twenty ninth.
Maybe we guess. We'll, we'll work on our, you know.
Maybe the incentive would be getting athletic shirts if you marched. The yellow ones looking jazzy there.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
For, uh, comments and questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John, are the lights still on?